I would call the Planning Board meeting in town of Aspen of March 5th to order. It is 7:05. We have all members present, yes? Yes, ma'am. The, I did basically talk about we are going to visit the solar array constructor at Sanford Airport on March 11th. Members will meet here and at 9:30 a.m. And since you know someone, you can probably get a day that you could make one of these things. That would be great.
My schedule would still be great.
That would still be great. I mean, although anytime we go out, you seem to win the door prizes. You seem to win the door prizes.
We have an apple.
Well, no, no, more business.
That was ago.
But, but, you know, somebody else brings.
It's fine.
No, it wasn't. You and I, onto, onto old, onto old business.
A couple of, a chair.
Yes.
A couple of minutes.
We're getting there. Yeah. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 27th.
I'm making motion to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2020.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you all. I haven't seen the, wasn't here. Thank you. Uh, onto old business. We have York County Agricultural Association, 13th Street. We have no new information, therefore nothing to discuss tonight. Bernie, Bernie, tell me, please, move on. Site review application for Dodd's Solar Sanctuary and Sanctuary, Mini Jones and Ice Stream dump. A site walk is scheduled for March 14th, meet here at 11:00 a.m. There's no new information at this point, no need for discussion. And subdivision application submitted by Martella Estates, Estates on Lake, LLC, 767, 776, 2nd Street Road. Site walk is scheduled for Saturday, March 7th, day after tomorrow. We will be looking at the new road, since we've all seen the first road so many times. We have no new information tonight, so there's no discussion on that either. I will say this, on the site walk, we, and we will, when we arrive here, Brad Jones will be there, Ms. Martella will not be there, as far as I know. We will stay in our, stay in our cars, or we'll have a group of cars. There's no real reason for us to get up out of the cars, particularly the way the, and it's like today, the roads are pouring to the mud and it's pretty messy, and we can see what we need to see. We will come back to the starting point again, get out of the car, discuss any quick things we have. In the beginning, we will tell any of the public that's there. This is not an open discussion kind of thing. Have them write down any questions they have, and they can bring them up at the public hearing, as we've done in the past. So, that's just gonna, anyone have any questions on that? No? Okay, great. Uh, new business. I'm saying, Gold Card George, Solage. LLC, 604 H Road, Route 224, Lot 026. A conditional use application for an 18 acre solar. Now, are you Jim Moran?
Uh, no, I'm Brett Pingham.
You're Brett?
He's Brett. Yeah, I'll, yeah, I can, I'll probably kick off the conversation when you're ready.
That's fine. Uh, you will be doing a, I'm sorry, your name isn't on here, that's for free. So, actually, I'm going to say, take it away.
Okay.
Won't you do your PowerPoint?
Yeah, great.
And then we will pass some discussion afterwards. All right.
I'll, I'm gonna loosely follow the PowerPoint to get started, but it's, I think we brought copies for everybody, and you have the digital version, so you can share and read it. What I'm gonna do-
Is it in here?
Uh, no, I could not talk over there. I emailed the PowerPoint to, on Friday, but I haven't put it up properly.
Why don't we hand those out, just for, for giggles and...
Put it up. Right there.
And that, that's something you can take with you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go through. Might be a chat about that.
Oh.
I think that is a madness. There's so many fun, there's so many movies.
Why'd you say that?
We've got a lot of those.
It's a simple line.
Can I have a copy, Ken?
Oh. Good one. I'm thinking, have it now.
I don't know, we've got a lot there.
I can give you, I'll give you this one before I go. All right. So, my name is Brett Pingham, I live in Talmud, Maine. This is Jim Moran. I work for Saltage, or Saltage.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, this is Jim Moran, he lives in Dayton, and Jim works for Burns McDonald. Saltage is the company I work for, is a solar developer owner, which is, they're based out of New Jersey. They develop solar projects, they finance solar projects, and then Saltage owns the solar project.
Do you do, is it commercial, or do you commercialize it?
You have two questions. So, um, so it's a 14-year-old company. They started, the reason they're in New Jersey is because that was the first state that had solar programs in the U.S. And that's, and so that's where they started. They started with rooftops, commercial industrial. And then over the last few years, after doing rooftops and landfills, similar to lots of other solar companies, Saltage has evolved into what's called greenfields. And of the size of 1 megawatt to 5 megawatt. Now, to give you a sense, 1 megawatt is typically 5 acres. That's a rule of thumb. 4 to 5 acres is typically 1 megawatt. So, over, over the years, Saltage has gone from their rooftops and brownfields or landfills to greenfields of that size. There's two reasons why a company, our company and lots of other companies have made that similar decision. One is, a lot of the solar programs are designed in different states for up to 5 megawatts size. And then, like of any other sort of business, there's economies of scale, so the same cost and effort to build a 500 kilowatt or 1 megawatt, it's the same to build a 5 megawatt, but you get a lot more, a lot more energy out of it. So, that's why we migrated over our 14 years, and you'll see a lot of the companies doing the exact same thing. And greenfields are typically easier projects to do as well, compared to a landfill. You know, greenfields, especially if you pick good sites, they're, they're less impact, less cost, and, and they produce, you know, more energy, and I'll explain that. So, that's what Saltage does. And what we do is, we finance the project. So, they hire guys like me. I've been in the industry, I've, for 15-plus years, and I basically find parcels of land, I work with landowners who are willing, and then work with the towns on permitting, and we hire consultants like Burns McDonald to do engineering and permitting for us. They, they, you know, they do all the complicated stuff, the drawings and the wetlands, and we'll go through all that tonight. So, we hire people to help us, and then we, my company's, one of the strengths is that they have access to lots of money in New York, the banks. It's really the banks that do, that do most successfully in these projects. Tax equity is a, an important part of financing, and so Saltage is able to get the banks lined up to finance these deals. And that's, that's really, it's, now it's, these solar projects, banks are getting really comfortable with them. They're divesting from coal and, and other fossil fuels, and they're investing more into solar, because they're getting much more comfortable that these systems work. They're not complicated, there's no moving parts, and they last for at least 20, 25 years. So, the banks are getting really comfortable, and that's why you're seeing more states, more companies getting involved in solar. Um, let's see, our company is, you know, we have 350 megawatts of projects. So, let's see, uh, this project's like a four, roughly 3 and 1/2, 4 megawatts. So, what's that? 100 times, you know, we have 85 projects similar to this project. Across 13 states, we have 18 in Massachusetts, 1 Vermont, 5 in Rhode Island, and then a few other states, like South Carolina, North Carolina, Illinois, California. New England has been traditionally, other than California, one of the stronger, more progressive, excuse me, markets for clean energy. And in August of last year, Governor Mills and the legislature passed a new set of laws that incentivize clean energy. And one of them is a solar bill, called LD 1711, if you want to look it up. That, so, living in Maine, so I was developing projects in Massachusetts and Rhode Island the last few years, and then living here, I kind of saw that this was coming. So, what Saltage did, you know, what I did, working for Saltage, is, you know, I found some local companies, and they helped me find land around York, Cumberland counties that met specific criteria. You have to be near 3 base power, preferably within 5 miles to the substation. Flat is better, less trees is better. We don't really like cutting down forests.
Because Maine doesn't seem efficient of putting a new substation?
No, it's not. Nope. Nope, they're not gonna put their new substation. Not for our size projects, they wouldn't. If, right now, let's, so, we, so if we had a, if, if a new substation was required from this project, it would be cost prohibitive, and we would walk away. Because I think that would cost $3 million, maybe something dollars to put in these, and they'd make us pay for it. So, part of finding these sites is figuring out where there's capacity on the network. So, there's ways we can do that, and we hired an engineering firm to help us find substations that had, they call it injectability, capacity to pump the electrons into the grid. And so, you kind of go through this process where you figure out where's the substations or the substations or the circuits that can take in the power, where are the parcels of land that meet, you know, no wetlands, you know, less trees, flat, south facing. And then, and then you, you know, basically, we have, we hired a guy to knock on doors, essentially, and talk to people, and, hey, your land seems like it might fit, and are you interested? And so, we have six projects in Maine. Two in Naples, one in Livingston, that, one here in Acton, one in Parsons Field, and one in Sandish. We are only working on three right now. One in Naples, Livingston, and this one. So, the land, we, we found this land with, we met with Mr. Doyle, and he had, you know, this site is a mere perfect site. It's, it's hardly wooded at all. There's no wetlands. It's gently sloped in the right direction. He has an access road there, 3 things is right on the road, and the substation, at the time as we knew it, and I'll get into this later, was clean and clear, or had injectability. It could take the power. So, we entered into a lease agreement, lease auction with Mr. Doyle. It's a, I think it's a 35-year, I'll share it with the town.
That's what it's worth.
When I was in Aspen, that was worth.
No, it's, it's, so it's a 20-year base term with, I get it mixed up. It's, I think it's 3, 5-year options at our discretion for a total of 35, I'm pretty sure. I'll, I'll share it with the town, I'll just read that.
I'll read that, I just.
I think it's in here.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay, it's, great.
It is in here.
Okay. So, and that's an option. So, that's, that means, you know, we pay them some money for a couple of years while we try to get, gotta get our permits, we gotta get an interconnection agreement with CMP, we gotta get DEP permits, which we actually already have, we'll talk about that. We had the town permit, I think I said that. So, while we're doing that, you know, we pay them a small amount. But then, once we have all the permits and the interconnection agreement with CMP, and the cost to build the electrical infrastructure, then we go get the financing from the banks, and then we are ready to build. And at that point, the lease converts into, from an option to a lease, 20 years plus the 35-year options. Let's see, where do I want to go from here? I think probably, that's a good overview from the commercial side. We're the company that's gonna own it. I could talk more about the construction and the O&amp;M and things like that, but maybe what I'll do now is shift a little bit to Jim, let him quickly talk about his company, what they do. We hired Jim. We're gonna be the company that you're gonna issue the, well, hopefully issue the permits to, if everything meets your standards. And then, we will be the company that would build the project and maintain it for the duration. Okay? Any questions so far? And, and so, like I said, we've done this, so we've, we've done this a bunch in other states, and we just got our conditional lease permit from Livingston last week, and I'm happy to share the, Stan Hackett, the Chair of the Planning Board, you know him, you could talk to him about how that process went. We had a meeting two nights ago with the Planning Board in Naples, and we got preliminary approval for a conditional lease permit. I don't know the Chair, the name-
That's, that's, I mean, that's something we can find out if we want to at any point. And I've said this to other groups that come before us, before us, you know, you're not before those other people now.
Yeah.
You know, we have to go that way.
Sure.
And do that.
I was just trying to be, you know, a bit, a bit-
No, that's fine, because we do our due diligence as well.
Great.
Yeah, that's great. So, so-
So, you can't, right, yeah, introduce you. Yeah, we'll go through the, we'll go through the PowerPoint presentation real quick.
Really?
Yeah, it was. It's, it's not much, being a normal introduction, which we did, we'll do a company overview, talk about the existing site information, proposed project overview, the permits we received so far, a little bit about the construction process with some example photos, and then we can answer any questions. So, Brett talked a little bit about Saltage, we have the two slides in here, you can look through those, as he goes through his presentation. I don't know if I want to hear and go through, no, sorry. So, we'll, we'll all do these slides, and go to the next one, and the next one. And then, Burns McDonald, who I work for, Brett's company hired us. We are an employee-owned company, full-service engineering, architecture, construction, environmental, building solutions firm. We have over 7,000-plus employees, not here in Maine, but across the U.S. We have engineers, architects, construction professionals, planners, and estimators, a wide variety of disciplines. I work in the Fulton office, and we primarily focus on project management, civil electrical engineering, and environmental permitting, which is the division I'm doing. As Brett said, we've got Larry Doyle's property that we're working with, Larry Susan, it's on 42th Road, it's about a mile of road from here, the afterlot, as you know, Lot 224, 26. Larry's parcel, he owns about 20, 52 acres. It's in a rural district. The plan is to lease 25 acres. In the current use, there's a dirt farm road, it crosses an intermittent stream, and then it goes to an open field. It's a current site. I guess it used to be an apple orchard back in the 60s, a lot of people who lived here may be familiar with that. It used to be an apple orchard, or a few years back in the 60s or so. But I think over the past decade, a little longer, it's been an open field. Do you collect any?
Right.
Maybe you know the area, from the kind of-
I worked there.
Oh, you worked there? Okay, great.
Apple orchard field.
So, this is a quick overview where the site is, which you guys all know, just a high level. So, basic information, Saltage is gonna lease 25 acres of vacant land. They can construct a new, very modern 3.5-megawatt ground-mounted solar array. The project has got access from a 50-foot wide, 240-foot long easement from H Road, and a combination of existing gravel roads and open field. The project will be positioned, designed in the open field, and interconnected with the distribution lines along each road, which are located approximately 575 feet west of the site. So, the site, 25-acre lease, and the array will be approximately 18 acres. A larger parcel, which you probably all know, I include the single-family residence, he has an auto salvage business, and then making open field enforcement.
The entrance, that's pretty close to the house, the existing road.
Um, there are two houses on either side.
Right, right.
Yeah.
They're the original roads, near the old farmhouse, and it's very close to the house. They tell you, trying, they're gonna work out a deal, maybe you can move that a little bit farther away from the house for-
Good question.
That's only 20, 50 feet from the house, it's probably one tire away.
Yeah, so, it's a good question. Right now, we're planning to use that existing road that is in, that he, that Larry still uses occasionally, and he has the easement. We have a-
I do have a block that's camera-
Um, the plan is to use that road-
This road right here?
Yeah.
From here?
Yeah, right here. He, he's actually, he, they use this road.
That one there is one on top.
Yeah, and what, what, the, the actual easement is right next to the property. So, we're gonna move it up, was our plan. And, and just move it a little bit back. That was our plan. You know, he has another easement to the property down below, but there, it would, it would impact wetlands.
What's the word down there?
Yeah, so, ideally, we'd use that. That's the plan.
So, this is why, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. That's Lot E100, she's up, what it's called, yeah.
It's in New York, active information. So, quickly, the site's very rolling, gently sloping to the south, as Brett indicated, it's open farmland, but it's got forest land around it. There's a small man-made pond, an intermittent stream, associated with the wetland, it's floating on the western side of the project. The project is not gonna have any wetland impact. This is all going to be in the upper. There is the access road that crosses the intermittent stream channel, and there's a French drain style that crosses it, topped with their gravel. I looked around, I couldn't find any culvert, I mean, you guys-
I don't believe it.
Yeah, it's just a French drain. So, the project plans to include the access road and replace the French drain with an open bottom box culvert. The project will include drills underneath the intermittent stream channel via a process called the horizontal directional drill, and that'll connect the array to the first interconnect pole for the roof front. So, there won't be any impacts to the stream. We're actually gonna be an enhancement to that stream, replacing that open, the French drain with open bottom box culvert.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Yeah, just to explain that, because this is, this was new to me, I didn't know where French drain was. And assuming a few of you may not either, they, the farmers at the time put rocks in kind of a stand, in a standing manner, and then the water flowed through the rocks. By putting an open box culvert, the, it was in the Army Corps-
Army Corps, yeah.
Army Corps said that that open box is an improvement, because it allows animals, or, and I guess, critters, whatever-
Little predators to go through.
Craters to go up and through.
Amelians and little-
So, we weren't sure, but they-
Cat bulls.
They said that that was an improvement, and that they were happy with that.
Yeah, very much.
And that's about all their, their-
That's about all their bottom part anyway now.
Yeah, yeah, so it was like, you know.
Yeah, and the open bottom culverts are replacing everything.
Yeah, so, and then the project will, we'll clear some, it'll be about 2 acres along the southern edge and along the eastern edge of the existing field, just to prevent the shadow effect from the trees. So, that's a basic view of the, the site. The solar array comprised of several hundred solar panels, I'm not sure the exact number if there's a lot, on metal racks. It's got inverters, junction boxes, switchboards, voltage transformers, recovers, and associated interconnect poles. The facility will be gated, 8-foot tall security fence around the perimeter, with an interior on the western side, dimensions on the western side. Once the solar array is built and in service, it will not just have any impact on local traffic patterns. It will be unmanned. This is, the facility will be infrequent, and just mainly for inspection and routine maintenance purposes. And they, I think social plans to mow underneath the panels twice a year, the spring and then the fall.
How far is the solar panel up to that?
The highest part is, I wanna say 12 feet, and then the lowest is 4 feet, 3 or 4 feet, 3 or 4 feet, and then I think 12 feet.
I think you might wanna adjust to the mowing, mow it twice a year.
Well, if you do our DEP permits, they will not allow us to mow it any more than twice a year. So, because if we mow more than twice a year, it changes the classification. Right now, the DEP considers that a metal buffer, and it's not a developed area. So, if we mow more than twice a year, it's usually-
Is that because the grass, you see the grass- Right, and a lot of the grass goes, you know, it's pretty deep off the ground.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look at that. The, what we'll end up doing is, we, yeah, so, we aren't gonna be reseeding much, because we're not disturbing the soil.
Right.
So, those, call them native or local grass will continue to grow there, so you'll have, we'll have to keep that in mind. Yeah, if they impact the ability of the sun to get energy, we'll wanna address that. Yeah, because that-
Just mowing the property, what they do. They hate it, boys, to use it now.
Right, so that means there's a lot of material. Yeah, okay, that's a good point.
Now, is this, of course, it's wireless. Something happens, you guys get a message from, you know, like a home security system, bing, 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 something's happened at grid number 1, 2, 3, and you send somebody to take care of it.
Yeah, so, we monitor all of, so we have 80-something projects, some number like that, and we monitor all of those. We have a team of 12 or 15 people that monitor all of our projects to ensure they produce the amount of energy they're supposed to produce, because these are-
Okay, but, but something happens.
Yep.
And, and something goes A-B, you are alerted to that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And then-
If something happens.
Yeah, because we start losing money in it, right?
Okay, best, best thing, right?
Yeah, and then we send people out. We'll have, we'll hire the local contractors to do the, the operations, maintenance, and the checks.
Yeah.
And if something goes wrong, you know, usually it's the inverters that die in these things.
Yeah.
That's one of the weak links, so every 5 or 10 years, the inverter will die. And yeah, for a place that, we'll know when that happens, and we send people out to deal with that. Um, as in the presentation, we, we'll have some vegetation screening, I know it's a new-to the standards that we meet, so, we will have vegetation screening. Part of the site development includes, we'll talk about some arborae, it's a phycia along the western perimeter.
Pick out the, uh, phycia, for truth for, phycia. That was pretty, that was pretty cool when I read that.
Well, it's-
It was you, right?
Yeah, I'll take care of it, sure. If you want to collaborate, we'll be on this.
There'll be a little background story there, but we won't, we won't bore you with it.
Yeah, so, now, let's just- Yeah, so, now, let's do discussions and what these folks usually put in. And this is a quick overview of the site, to the access road and kind of the layout. Just on the western side, from the E road.
Another, another year plan, you just long fence?
Perfect, did you do the back?
You have a finger?
I do, so the fence of the, the security fence... Chain link. Is, is around to here. This is along the edge. So if, if we would've put, you know, screening along here, the closer the screening is to H Road, the better it'll be. From, you know, a visual sense, we had Jerry Juana Associates do, they do a drive-by, they did an analysis on the best way to have screenings for this. And you don't want anything too close, because the road too tall, because then you'll have...
Shadow effect or issues.
So the closer it is to the road, the way the angle is and the elevation, this will be the most optimal place to... There's already vegetation, and you see here, the tree line here. The sun comes, I think, from this side, goes over to this side, and that's typically on the other.
Those did.
Huh?
Those did.
So, so in any rate, in E Road, the way the elevation is, this is the most optimal location for that screening.
Will it completely block it from you?
No, not even close. You'd be lucky if it blocked any of it. Because it was down, goes like this, and it goes back, and it goes back up. And where they're gonna put the screen is down, basically, in the valley.
Well, the valley, it could come on, it's really through this area, through, through here. And this is where the, the water comes in, into this pond somewhere through here, and then it overflows, and then it crosses, and then this is the wetland down here, stream and then this is the wetland. So, you know, you do go down, and then kind of runs out, but then the terrain certainly, you know, this is all high elevation. So that's why, I mean, putting it along here wouldn't, wouldn't do any, I mean, ideally, you'd want it, if it could, you put it along H Road here, but that... That won't help the landowners. But the landowners, I mean, the easement, access easement is right here. So this is the closest area that it could be planted that...
Well, I appreciate that, but reality is, I mean, that stuff would have to be forty, fifty foot tall before you're not gonna see any of that down there. And, and that's when we have to run dead and gone.
Yeah, I think to your point...
We talked about, everybody knows it.
Well, I appreciate that, but I just don't want people to think that you're not gonna see it.
That's correct.
Big difference, you are going to, even with the stuff you're planting.
Yeah, and I think even if you, I mean, even, once you get in this back corner here, you know, the elevation...
Drops all back, drops back down.
It does drop back down, I think, you know, up here it's, you know, high, but it will provide some screening, but it won't make it, well, it's not like you can see a forest, you won't see all the guys at that.
Well, sure, town on the, on the pastel land, north of this project, at the top of that hill, actually, by the construction station, you know, that's right.
I, I know of it.
I was curious the other day, I was up there, we, we couldn't even see Larry's field where it was, you know, the field from the top. This Roque was...
You couldn't, you couldn't go down and see this field?
No, you couldn't tell where it was, you couldn't tell where the, where the H Road was. Oh, I'm assuming that this will not be visible from here.
Yeah, I think...
The arborvitae that you're planting, I assume you're going to get something substantial. Because they do grow at least three feet a year, and they can grow to fifty or sixty feet.
Yeah.
I don't know, the ones I have are only twelve foot.
But, but that's what you bought, that's what you bought, okay? I mean, I, I had some one time that were, that matured at four feet, but you can get them, they grow up to fifty or sixty feet.
Quince, maybe, but up at the top, I think they talk about green giant arborvitae.
Probably, I think that's what I said.
So we, yeah, I mean, this is something where we, we have, we wanna be flexible. And we wanna work with all the stakeholders, right? Sometimes we planted the dwarf arborvitae that only grow, whatever, ten or twelve feet. You know, I think we could plant taller than the ones that go to forty, fifty, or whatever. It could block the sunlight, you know, we'll have, we'll have to figure out what's best for everybody. I'm more happy to do whatever kind of trees that would be best suited, you know, within reason, you know, obviously, but... I mean, we could plant the mature, the fifty footers, I just, that's gonna, if it was me, it'd be a trade-off. Like, I still want some sunshine in my house, but I also wanna block the panels. So, I don't know the answer, I guess. Yeah, I was looking at you.
Oh, no, let's see, let's make one mark there.
It's his compensation.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. I'm just looking to see if I can read how I read, well, I think, yeah, the apple pond is maybe thirty feet, I don't know, too small, I don't know if it's playing, I think it'll show on a larger plan. But I, I thought they would call for the giant arborvitae.
A green giant arborvitae grows fifty to sixty feet off top, and will spread twelve to twenty feet when matured. Three feet again.
You know, one thing is, we could...
But I mean, what you have on your plans, that's on the road, a lot of these questions, because we're gonna get the phone calls. You guys aren't.
Yep.
We're gonna get the phone calls, and we just want to, to know what went in and what the answers are. And, you know, everything's gonna, no pun intended, but be green light to bring energy in.
Sure.
I could, you always have something to make the thought of.
I was just gonna say that. I was gonna say, if that was a condition where, you know what, every five years, whatever, to keep them...
You're gonna, you're gonna have to know what you're going to do with your investment on that. And if you get something that's invading your investment, I'm sure you're gonna take care of it.
Right. Yeah, in this case, the sunlight, yeah, we'll have to look, right, we'll have to look at that and make sure. I think the way the sun goes, that even if those, we'll have to look at this, but the fifty, even if they were fifty foot down there, it may not, because there's such a distance, it's usually a three to one or five to one, I, sure, I was saying, so we do five to one, and it's fifty feet, that's two-hundred-and-fifty feet, you wouldn't, the shading wouldn't impact, so...
Well, the sun's gonna be going this way anyway, towards H Road.
Yeah.
So if it's throwing any shadows, it's gonna be throwing shadows across H Road.
Right.
It's not gonna be thrown backwards.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
You know? Because you're talking about, right, the west side?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that sun comes over the square pond, I live on the other side of the hill, on, on West Shore. So it comes over the hill, and it actually will be a little bit to the north of the position you're talking about, usually in the summer, kind of that is, I hope. And it's probably not gonna be anything at all, I mean, the shadows will...
Right. So we, it'll kind of be, I guess, well, I'm not sure what the right process, I guess, you're gonna send the notices out to the abutters, and then we'll wait and hear from them, I guess, and, and talk it through.
There's very broad conversations right now, cut them.
Yeah, and I guess the, you know, this is the plan, there is a landscaping plan for the project. And we can, and as I said, we can work, we can... So here's a color overlay.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry, answer, I'm sorry.
Could you maybe develop an answer for us on that visibility from the summit, this north of this?
If, I've never been to that summit, but if you can't see his field from that summit, then you wouldn't see this, because these pales, as Brett's saying, are high-sized, it's only, you know, twelve, fifteen feet above the ground. So if that's not... And I know Larry has very mature pine trees up there that he's not cutting down. And those are a hundred footers or eighty, fifty years.
Yeah.
Those things are tall, that's what's blocking, that'll block everything from the north. If you're up at the north, yeah, you won't.
Tom, I know, when I've been to the top, up there, you know, and I look down on Square Pond, you barely see all of Square Pond, I mean, you know, the line of sight. I think it'd be hard pressed to see anything.
That's what I assumed.
Yeah.
Good chat, yeah. So that answer your question, sorry?
I, well, you guys should answer it for good, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, the answer is available, but I, I'll take the word for it. What would be the area of impact would be that whenever vegetation was on that existing north lane of fence line.
Up, up here, yeah, that, those are the trees, this is the sound, the geodes, these have been very tall pine trees. And then from there, it was...
Should be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody can develop an answer for that, just by a little large cross section, vertical cross section, very typical. It's a simple little plan to show that the conduits are on your site.
Yeah.
On your site from...
They showed it on this map, Tom.
With map, oh.
This one? Oh, yeah, if you wanna go back...
They should go show the whole map.
Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, right there, stop. So is this, here's Square Pond, here's the array, you can see the pond that's going down. Yeah, I'm not sure, is this the area you're talking about, or is it for the...
Elevations eight-hundred-and-sixty-five feet or thirty-five feet or something, that's what I'm saying.
Up here?
Yeah.
Both, both from Larry, or is it, both of them?
No, it's good enough to roll, is it up here maybe?
Oh, yeah, right, Roque.
Oh, way up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was like, it's behind, almost seen behind the, it's down and over. Yeah.
Up and over?
Up and over, yeah. Up and over.
Yeah, it's, you know, eight-hundred, you know, it's about...
So, you know, being able to see this, you, you know, this whole landscape up here, the trees would block this, because this is on the south, south-facing side of that, so if you're up here looking down, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see that. Yeah, sure. Okay.
Coming where we were.
Yeah, so, yeah, so here's a color overlay, you know, the access road comes in, this is the stream channel. This is the, the wetlands down here, which we are, you know, staying well off of. And then these are the panels, and this is the access road. These are for the transformers on, is that right, Brett? And then this is the, this is around the end, so. So the permits we received so far, we've applied for two permits with the main D E P, the Natural Resources Protection Act, current by rule, and a stolen water permit by rule, which we've received. And I made copies of those here for everybody. And we've also reached out to the Encore of Engineers, we filed permits with them, I've been speaking with an agent, and she said we should get those permits on the tenth, so, next week. So these are the, this is the main D E P, Natural Resources Protection Act, current by rule, with the permit on the bottom, and then the other one is the stolen water permit on the bottom. And I have copies of those.
So they were all approved?
Those are approved, yeah, two buyers approved that, you can see the same in the chat box. So we have those, and they've also been emailed to Ken, Ken has, should have received copies of these. So real quick, the construction process, I both talked about it, there's some clearing and some site preparation. Then after that, install erosion controls, to keep all your stuff from your side of the line. Followed by, you know, underground electrical conduit goes into place.
How's the deep side look, how's the deep?
Yeah, it's below the frost line.
Below the frost line, yeah.
How, four feet?
I think it's four feet, yeah. I don't know, I don't know the, what's the frost line. I think it's four feet.
Four, four?
It's below the frost. So it's four feet, huh? Yeah. Yeah. Little bigger frost, if you're... Yeah, and then you've got the, the rack to the panel installation, so they've got, you know, posts that go on the ground, which are what these are, and then they've got these racks that attach to that, which the panels attach to.
So between each set of racks, no?
Go ahead.
How many, how many underground lines do you, do you, under each?
Well, they're all easy chained together, so depending on how the layout is, you may have several rows, but... Yeah, the panels are connected to each other, and then there's a collector point, there's multiple collector points. So the, I don't know, I can get you the answer on how many underground conduit runs there are. But they, I know that they, that the panels are all wired together so that you can have a limited trenching, and it's all consolidated or...
They're all wired together above ground?
Above ground, yeah, that's, yeah, right, above ground, yeah. So I, that's something I can have a better answer for.
I think, you know, the side you're talking, you know, they're gonna have to dig fifty ditches down to the end.
No.
You don't need one of your lines or...
No, yeah, there's, I'll get you the right one.
Sure.
It's, it's not, it's a cost precaution, efficiency, they have kind of main trunks underground. And so I'll, I'll make sure I have that a better answer for that. I think I have the electrical ground that you can bring, and share that.
Very good.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, and then at the very end, once it's all put together, you've got the panels, then we have site development restoration. So if there's any destroyed soils, they reseed it, the grass, and then you've got our landscaping. This is just some example photos, but they have landscaping, part of the landscaping plan. It's usually a, I usually say three to six month construction cycle. You know, it's more, sort of more heavy up front with month to two months of, they do the tree cutting, the grubbing. In this case, it's only two acres, so that's not as much, which we like, than, so the first month or two, that's that more heavy kind of work, and then they'll, in this case, they don't, they don't have to disturb most of the site, which is great. So we're gonna actually do our best to dis, the less we disturb, the less we have to fix.
So you, oh, yes, stations will be all pounded?
They're all driven in, yep, they've driven in, and then that, you know, that's all done within, depending on how hard the crews were, but, you know, two months, three months, depending on whether to, and so then, that, and then after that, it quietens down. So it's not, it's relatively light traffic, you know, it'll be intense for, relatively intense.
Most of the stuff's intense around that.
Yeah.
For several months.
Okay, yeah. And then that, you know, so after that, the panels, the racking is, you know, they don't use heavy equipment for that. Light equipment and technicians, and...
How big are each panel?
Uh, that's a good question, I don't know off the top of my head.
I have a spec sheet.
I know.
I, I actually saw someone putting a panel in a ground installation. Very interesting installation of that.
Four feet, like six feet?
Yeah, four, I was...
And it was one technician, literally...
Very light.
Picking it up, going to where it was going to be put down, actually, four feet under the ground, because it was in a, a, a first named alley.
Oh, okay.
In one of the Puerto Rico Houston, and some of the islands that were devastated last year. They're putting in these solar arrays, but they're keeping them low to the ground.
Right, we're both in the snow. So, yeah, that's a good question. The snow definitely accumulates, but what happens is, so we have projects in Vermont and western Mass. They, you know, what happens is, you'll get a big two-day dump or whatever, and it, you know, and it collects. As soon as the storm passes and the sun comes out, they slop off, they slop off. You know, the way the angle is, and the metal heats up and they're black, it doesn't take much and they just slop off.
Like a hammer?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, correct.
I was just taking that part, you might be more involved in the grassy than...
You're building up or something?
In a hundred-foot of snow. I'm moving forward.
Yeah.
Where do you live?
So we factor that in, I don't know if we factor in a hundred, but what we, we use data that, we get it from meteorological... we, we use, um, uh, data that, I, we get it from meteorological centers around the state, and, um, and the amount of solar production is relative to the weather conditions in the area. So we factor that into our financial models that, you know, we're, it's not Arizona, right? Or it's not even, you know, southern New Jersey or whatever, there's, we factor in that in Vermont and Maine, you've got a few more cloudy days, more snowy days, so we count for that. Um, you know, there are winters, right, that are known.
Would like to...
But it would have built up, though, and covered the, um, the red.
We would lose power, and we would lose money, and then for the time that it's covered, beyond what we would, we factor in through the model some, you know, let's call it twenty days or something, and if it's beyond that, we, it's on us. We lose money, and, uh, and there, you know, you'll see cycles, right? You get your winters where you get no snow, and then you get some that are heavy and it should wash out, um, all things equal.
I have a question here. Hi, uh, what normally you would do with the, I'll call it alleyways between the panels?
So that's all, that'll be all the, I call it the native grass, or whatever the grass is there, that stays in place, and then we mow that twice a year.
So would you guys be doing any planting or, prior to, prior to...
No, no need to, uh, because it's already, um, it's already made of grass. We, we won't, we don't want to disturb, we want to keep that, the original native stuff in there. Now, in other sites, we will plant, um, what they call pollinator species of, but in this case, we don't have, I mean, uh, where we cut the trees down, we'll have to do some, we'll plant something, um, for erosion control, but, um, in this site, because it's a field where we minimize any, and if we do dig up some turf, we'll plant grass, all, you know, flowers or what, you know, the...
Conservation.
Conservation.
Conservation, that's native?
Yeah.
Yes, and, um, I can create another question. Oh, there's no need to, uh, any topsoil, if you're going down, can, uh, we, we should be, we'll leave that on tight.
Absolutely, out on the annual rest of it. Yep, yep, yep.
What is, what's the size of the actual, it's quite surprisingly small, instead of the post that goes in there?
Oh, the post that goes in the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are, they're, they are...
Like a fence post.
Yeah, they're, they go in the ground, you know, four feet, five feet?
In here, it says you, you go into bedrock, and that's what I was curious about.
You know, so that's a good, that's a good question. We can, we plan for either case, if we hit rock, we have to do a screw type anchor, um, we're prepared to do either one, um, we may, I think our, our in-house engineer, just because most of Maine is quite rocky.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Assume the worst.
Yeah.
For this project, um, but I, we'd like to think that that, because that's been farmed land for a long time, that hopefully it's...
Hopefully it's not, huh?
Hopefully it's not, but we're prepared for the, um...
But the size, the actual size of the, like, six by six, six by eight, sort of thing?
Yeah.
So there really isn't, each, each one of these things is not disturbing, or not.
That's right.
Cumulatively, yes, because there are a lot of souls there, but each one is not...
That's right, so DEP, um, is pretty clear on this, and they consider that solar array, other than the road, the road is impervious.
Yeah.
But the array is, is not, because, um, the, the footprint of that, um, post is limited, and the panels shed water, um, and, and, you know, they, they've got an explanation, but they consider the impact to be minimal with the post.
It's taking a lot of posts to cover a lot of area.
Right.
A lot, so, you know, it's, as long as it stays vegetated and it doesn't get mowed every month, twice a year, they call it a metal buffer and, you know, you know, stuff. I knew, um, how do you...
Green gas line?
Huh?
Green gas line, what is that represented? Uh, I think this is the town...
This is our taxman. This is our taxman.
That's an easement.
Could be a, a tax show to the...
No, no, it's an easement.
Oh, is it?
It's an easement, so the, the family that owns the parcel to the east has an easement to the property, um, but the, when we looked at the language, uh, we did a title search and all that, and, uh, and then we also talked with Mr. Doyle, but, uh, based on the title search, the, the easement, um, the deal that Larry's father, well, anyway, it's in the, it's in the title, um, the access that the landowner has is to be agreed upon with the Doyle family, so, and they don't use it, but if they wanted to, they could, but we would just route their access to the south.
So it's just discretionary?
Yeah, that's, that's the right word.
Just to reflect that there is one, the actual location of it is agreed upon, like you said, once you, you can just make it come around.
Those regions that were used at, were building, building the farm, they used to use that, and they used to cut the wood. Oh, is that how you cut the wood out, was that eastern? Oh, no, they go on that green line.
Larry said that the, the gentleman who owned it has passed, and then there's a woman who currently owns it, she lives out of state?
They very well could be now.
That's true.
Frightened by the poor, you know, we have, yeah.
I couldn't even...
He was gonna reach out to him and talk to him, and, um, so...
But that's why that he, he said that's all the world.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, hey, well, this is just a...
The, uh, I'll come back to the substation thing, so we found, um...
I think they actually have those in here.
We, um, so, slightly unfortunately for this project, uh, CMP, we had a, they did a study, an interconnection study, which is normal part in parcel for these projects, CMP did an interconnection study, and they came back and we have, they want to charge us about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to upgrade the conductor line and, um, which is unfortunate, but, um, I think, I think we can still manage that, but my point bringing this up was, they said the substation we're connecting to is the same substation that another solar project that's larger is connecting to. I don't know anything about this other solar project.
Because they're planning on...
That some other company has...
There's another one coming in.
A larger one, apparently, I don't know much about it, I'm gonna try to find out more. Uh, I think towards Sanford, it's a Sam, I think.
Is it the airport one?
It's not the airport one.
There's one on Route Four, but there's also another one coming up across from, um, almost across from us here.
And it shares, we share the same substation, um, they're not, look, it doesn't appear that they're looking for any upgrades to that substation, but, um, we have to go through another level of, um, it's, um, New England ISO, uh, um, we're, we're kind of stuck a little bit, so it's a little bit of a pain, but I just, when you asked that question about the substation, I, I decided to tell you that...
There is one down Sanford, right?
I think that's the one we're connecting to, yeah, um, I, I have that information, not on, um, which substation it is, um, and I can figure out how far away it is. Some other solar company ahead of us is, with a bigger project, is, um, triggering a little, triggering extra studs, so we've got to deal with that, but, um, I think that's the only other kind of major point I would bring up on this.
Could you, at some point during our proceedings here, or in the future sometime, uh, not too far out, uh, give us a expense of the benefits that might be accrued to the town from a municipal project that you...
So for this project?
So, well, this is a private, uh...
Okay, there is, but I don't suppose...
The town isn't eligible for any benefits, they might have to this...
Well, actually, there are, so let me answer that question, then I can answer your, the other question for you. So the benefits to the town are, um, there's two. Um, one is there will be tax, um, revenue that the town receives. Now, I don't know, there's a, the main revenue service is trying to figure out the formula of how to calculate the value, and everybody's kind of in a hold right now.
I'll just, I'll put a value on it, but...
Well, we've done, we've done this before.
What, they voted me out?
So there will be unburdened, you know, the tax revenue, uh, and I, I don't know how much, but the main, main revenue service is working on that formula. The second, yeah, I know, the second, the second potential value to the town is, um, there are, in order for these projects to be successful, it's a requirement that my company finds off-takers for the credits, and, and, you know, we typically look for manufacturing high load, you know, grocery stores or bath iron works would be great, but, um, something like that, but, um, what we could do, you know, what we should do, is what I meant to say, is ask that if the town is interested in getting, I, I imagine your load, your electrical consumption is on the lighter side comparatively to what we're generating here.
If you look for bath iron works here.
Yeah, no, yeah, right.
You're gonna be looking...
Yeah, exactly. But, yeah, if you, if you, if someone here, whether it's select board or, I don't, can share with me what your annual, uh, consumption is, then we can make that, and this is what we've done with the other towns too, is you guys have a right to get ten percent off your power for just hosting an arrangement.
Right, somebody like the school.
Right.
Working, you know, clearly forty thousand dollars, we have a pile of that now.
Right, so if the school's paying, you know, with round numbers, fifty thousand, you know, we can take ten percent off that on an annual basis. With, you gotta sign a twenty-year contract, you gotta have good, you know, that you will, that you will take that power, it's a credit arrangement, it's a little confusing, but, um, the, the, really, the only burden to the town for the, for this agreement, you have to sign a twenty-year contract that says you're gonna, you'll take the power and you'll participate in this credit program, and the other piece is, um, uh, let's see, what's the other risk? Um, it's signing, it's basically signing a contract, um, and, and having reasonably good credit, because our, but I think that is, usually our banks are, are really uptight about the companies we transact with, um, because they're investing money and they gotta make sure that, uh, the off-taker pays the, pays their share and doesn't keep the energy, it, so, but I think with the town being the hope of...
Would be looking at a municipality.
Municipality.
Not an industry.
Right.
Where schools...
And it's a small portion of the overall transaction, right? I mean, it'll be, even if you pull in the school, it'll probably be a twentieth of the power we produce, maybe something like that, so we're gonna find other, the way they structured this, the, the reason they do that is to spread the wealth, right? It's clean energy for Maine, for Maine to meet its renewable energy targets, but also by requiring solar developers to work with businesses and municipalities, it gives some of that benefit to the businesses and the municipalities.
When would that point come, when we would call in our big guns to sit down with your big guns?
Oh, right away.
And say, okay, this is what we'd like to do, because that's telling me there's a direction we have to at least be thinking of, and it goes just beyond us, this is, you know, goes well beyond us. It'll go well beyond upstairs, too. How would it go well beyond stairs? Order selection, and then it has to go to the town, because we are a challenge meeting.
Well, well, with that being said, though, I would just meet tonight with the school on budgets.
Yep.
And the school department, if they were interested, and I think I could talk to the superintendent, um, they could sign an agreement.
Right.
With these people, the, the school department.
Schools that are not going to town anymore?
Oh, yeah, same thing they do with their bus contracts, they do, and, and the schools are, they're, that's a great, uh, off-taker or partner for these credits, that's a great, that would be great, and I would say the sooner we do that, the better.
Really?
Because I'm, this, I'm under a lot of pressure right now to find all these off-takers for these, for these projects, it's all I'm supposed to be doing right now, above everything else, so the sooner I can start to, because it's a little bit of a patchwork quilt, right? If you got, you know, the town and the school will, should have peace.
Right.
Um, and then we've got to figure out how to, you know, who gets, how much is the rest of the energy, uh, how much is left, and who does that go to? Because this is all happening right now, so I would love to...
Do a down number, right?
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah.
You said, do you have another question?
Yeah.
Uh, there's, there's...
What you don't ask?
I think it's a valid, uh, offset. Oh, yeah, streetlight, you just...
Tom, Tom, we can't hear the question at all, sorry.
Okay. Does anyone have a, a type of, or, or, uh, a policy of using as an offset, the municipal level, um, streetlight?
So, um, so to answer your question, um, there's two, there's a couple ways you can do, let's see, street lighting, um, I think, so there's, there's behind-the-meter type projects where we could put an array, a smaller array behind this building and, and have it behind your meter, and then you can zero your bill out, so that's one way. Street light, streetlights, I don't think you can do that, but what you can do...
This would be a municipal, so...
Right, well, I think these credits would take ten percent off, but if you were looking, or as a, as a round number, if you were looking to have the streetlights all be solar-powered, um, might take a little bit of work, uh, but it's probably a smaller project than what we would do, um, you know, especially with all the LED lights now, they're, the back amount of electricity is a lot lower than it used to be. But back to your other question that I didn't answer, is if the town has land that you, you didn't have any other use for, and it was of a size, as I said, five acres or ten acres or more, then we would definitely look at it to, if you wanted to work with a company like ours, or, um, you know, we could, we could talk to you about putting solar on town-owned land, we, we've talked with other towns about that, um, it's up to you, we, and in that scenario, you would get the lease revenues, okay, so that, so the, the type of arrangement we did with, with Larry and with all other, is it's a dollar, dollar per acre per year for the lifetime of the project, um, so that's a, that's a source of revenue, and then there's the tax, um, well, actually, municipality-owned, so you would tax yourself.
A lot of things, I think, like that, I've seen tons of, they're doing like, uh, transfer stations in landfill areas, they're putting in...
Right, right.
Small arrays.
Yeah, the town of Almond, the town of Rockland, uh, they're all doing, they're putting competitive bids out, and they're getting...
Rockland is such a competitive town, everything we hear is Rockland.
I got a, I got a question for you, uh, a project of this size, what type of hazards, uh, would we be expected to have to deal with, the fire service, and would there be any special training, uh, to our responders to handle any emergencies, as well as any equipment that is needed to handle that?
Good question, um, so the hazards are none, um, it, it's a, it, it, they don't move, um, there's no fuel on site, um, why, I mean, somebody could climb the fence, um, this eight-foot or seven-foot fence, so somebody could climb that and tamper with, there is voltage... fence, so somebody could climb that and tamper with, there is voltage, I don't know if it's high voltage, but there's voltage, uh, that is definitely, if somebody went in there. So that's a risk, if some, but that would, someone would have to break the fence or climb over the fence.
My, my concern is if, uh, we have a lightning strike.
Yeah.
The grasses that you mow twice a year catches fire, our fire department, which burns, uh, what type of hazards are we going to, you know, approach when we go into your, you know, uh, it's a good question.
I think in that case, they would just let it burn. If that was, if it, if for some reason, which I haven't ever heard of that happening, but let's say it did, then they probably wouldn't touch it. They probably would just leave it alone and, and let it, you know, burn. There's a fence around it, um, you know, a chain link fence. We meet with the town fire chief and we, it, we call it training, but they walk up, they have access to the, you give them access to the gate, they look at it and there's not a lot for them to absorb. Um, you know, there's a transformer, there might be two transformers on this. The transformers are no different than the transformers at like a CBS or something. They're small industrial transformers filled with vegetable oil. They don't put any of the bad stuff in them anymore. Um, you know, if there was an electrical fire, which again is extremely, extremely rare, then my understanding, you can talk to your fire chief about, um, they would just leave it alone. And again, I, that's an extremely rare event. I, I have never heard of it.
Would you have an open perimeter around the whole thing anyway?
Around the outside of fence?
No, on the inside. I mean, do you have your grid, maybe to have whatever field that's all the way around.
Space around it, yeah. And there's a road access up the middle.
Right, of the array.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, these are, and these are sealed, you know, they're glass vacuum sealed, it's silicon, um, and they don't, they, there's, I don't think there's any flammable per se in them. Um, I really don't, um, they don't burn.
Any, um, any electrical hazards where somebody climbs the fence and they go in there, uh, getting electrocuted?
Not touching anything, you can touch anything while it's operating.
The panels.
The panel, rack, the racks, the wires. If you break open the, the, uh, electrical panel, now, yeah, so, but everything, you can walk in there while it's operating and touch anything at any time unless you start opening things up. There is a safety disconnect switch with CMP that they require that, so if, um, the grid goes down, then it shuts the whole thing down. So if there's a power outage, we stop producing power. And then when the power comes back on, it's all, uh, well, it's not totally automatic, but they, they flip the switch to allow the power to start generating if there's a disconnect.
So CMP would flip that switch?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember-
Put that online, so to speak?
Yeah, there's, I'm trying, I, I, I forget the sequence, there's a specific sequence of-
Like any recent-
Yeah, of how, and I, I'll probably get it wrong if I tell you, um, but there, but CMP automatically shuts off, there's a safety disconnect.
Yeah.
And then I think we get a notice when it's, when the disconnect opens back up and then I think we have to open the, start the system up, is my understatement. Um, but I, I can get more specifics.
Thirty-five years from now, when everything is, your contracts and everything is done, or before that even, if you guys just walked away from the project, um, who cleans it up?
Yeah, so that's a great question, I should've mentioned that. So, um, we set up decommissioning bonds with, for every project. Um, being that solar is new to Maine, um, there isn't, there isn't any particular precedence, so that's fine. Um, we've got plenty of experience doing, setting up decommissioning bonds. We're going through this now with the other towns. Um, we'll propose, so to use another town as an example, just, um, is we-
Don't, don't be surprised, I, I tell everybody.
You're holding me all the time.
If everybody, if everybody in one of your places would jump off the bridge, would you do it too?
No, I would.
No, you wouldn't.
Yeah, no, I-
There we go.
So, uh, one, one way to do this, um, is we're gonna present to Leamington, um, um, a, um, analysis of what the cost would be to fully return the site back, to demobilize and, um, and then we put that into an escrow. Uh, so that's-
With inflation for twenty years from now or thirty years from now?
Right. And, you know, and there's certain language about if there's no production in twelve, over twelve months or, you know, we, we have language around that. What I'll tell you is that, as I mentioned before, these solar projects are such valuable projects, commodities really, to the banks, that if we did go bankrupt, um, or whatever, then there are so many people that would gobble up these, these assets. There are annuities streams essentially.
Really?
Well, yeah, they produce power every year, twenty year contract with CMP, right? And, yeah, so it's, um, so anyway.
Is they subsidizing any of this?
Um, let's see, how does that work? Um, I'm trying to think how they did this. Uh, they're, they're requiring CMP to buy the power. Um, and so I don't know how that's getting worked out, but CMP has to buy the power.
It must pass the campaign, making it think it will be subsidized and stuff.
Yeah, there's probably something in there, you know, maybe on the tax revenue side or-
Somebody can say it.
Yeah.
Brenda had a question. I need to be humane, but I didn't hear, is there a light factor to that?
It's a good question. So what's, um, what's really unique, I guess, or beneficial, the solar panels last an extremely long time, so long that the manufacturers give twenty-five year warranties, which is unbelievable, right? So they last at least twenty-five years. Um, excuse me, um, you know, sometimes people ask if companies would, um, re-power the site. I mean, the way the panels are evolving right now, I think three years ago, you had three hundred watt panels, now they're four hundred and sixty watt panels. In just three years, it's, you know, a dramatic increase in efficiency. You know, I don't, I can't tell you if we would put new panels on, maybe at year twenty we might.
So they don't degrade?
So they do, so they do degrade one percent per year. I think that's about the, about right. One percent per year, they do degrade in performance. So probably likely that in twenty years, that's why, you know, the contract ends with this, with CMP, who knows what the world's gonna look like, but, um, probably we would put new panels on if, and then extend our option with, uh, the landlord, whoever-
But like you said too, I mean, it's like, uh, I think you're all gonna have to remember floppy disks, right?
Right, exactly.
Floppy disk now to a little thumb drive.
Right.
And who knows, in twenty, twenty-five years.
Right.
You may have panels that are half that size that hold and collect twice the amount of energy.
Right.
And more efficiently.
Right. And what, I heard this other solar developer the other day answer that question and he had a good answer and he said, the contracts that we get right now, so we're signing a contract that's set with CMP to produce a maximum amount, it's, um, whatever, whatever this DMAX size is, we can't, if we double, let's say we were able to put more panels in, they won't, they don't have to pay us anymore. So there's kind of no incentive for us to add more panels because it's a twenty year contract with CMP for a set amount of power. And the, the, the infrastructure's only designed, you know, the, um, the interconnection contract that we signed with CMP and all these upgrades they're making us pay for are designed around the max amount of energy that we said we'd produce. So the truth is, when I heard this other developer talk about it, um, it's, there's no incentive for us to produce more power unless something changed, unless we, we've got a permit for another project and, but that project probably will stay the same. I mean, maybe we put new panels on, but the amount of power won't change. Maybe there's less panels or something, I don't know.
Um, when, when you go to, um, remove those panels, how are they disposed and is, is there, is there anything in the panels that would be detrimental to the environment?
So that, yeah, good questions. Um, there are some trace bad stuff in there, small trace elements. Not enough that it causes any concern. These panels don't leach, they don't melt, they don't dissolve, they don't, they rarely, I haven't heard it catch on fire. Um, they haven't totally figured out how to recycle these panels yet, to be totally honest. The plan is go figure that out. Um, and they last so long that that's part of why they haven't figured out, they haven't had a need, a pressing need to recycle them. You know, like for instance, car EV batteries, electric vehicle batteries, they're having to figure out how to recycle those fast. But panels, they haven't quite figured out how to recycle those in all honesty, um, and they will find a way.
And so while, while they're installed, there's nothing that will be leaching out of them in going into the, into the ground or the groundwater or?
Absolutely not. You have no leaking, no dissolving at all.
Hey, cause I haven't heard anything about that. I have heard that when it comes to dispose of the panel at the end of the plant, there's probably-
Yeah, they haven't figured out how to recycle it yet. Um, and you know, part of it again is cause these have been, you know, they have solar arrays in California that have been going on, that have been going for a very long time and they still produce, add a degraded power curve, but they're still producing. Um, so, yeah, I mean, the truth, they haven't figured out how to recycle them for the best yet.
What is some of that stuff?
I, I don't know. I, I honestly don't know, it's such a small amount that-
Cause I wanna begin with like something like heavy, some of the heavy metals or something.
And trace up, trace minerals, but they're, they're really bad, trace elements.
But we can find out, I mean, there's, it's probably stuff, you know, they're very, very low level. It's ninety, it, it's mostly silicon and aluminum and glass, those like-
Yeah, currently they're around, but even if, you know, when these panels come in crates and, but a truckload, if some of them are damaged or broken, um, they, they don't like, you know, leach out or break out, they, they're self-contained, they're, they're sealed packages. Uh, and if they break, it's like a car windshield, when it breaks, it's still contained, it's not like, you know, there are shards everywhere. You know, so, um, as they, my transfer them, if they do degrade or break down, they're, they're not leaching or breaking apart and crumbling into the ground and then leaching into the soil, they just, you know, fade, but they're self-contained and they don't leach out necessarily, it's right. So.
There's no liquid in it?
No.
No.
Can you, I just kinda heard them like, how much power is being generated?
Yeah, okay, um, let's see if I can get this right. Um, Kiva. I'm not mathematically fine, but you'd be right. Uh, it'd be fun for all of us here. Well, you know, see this, see this guy down, he's a smart man, he's, uh, he'll get it out.
I know, it's a good question.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Somebody else said for one watt, he's doing this.
I don't know, I just want to do the, I think it's like something like on the order, and again, of like forty thousand homes, thirty thousand homes. I'll get you, how about I get you a real answer? But it's, it's, you know, this is a three and a half megawatt project.
How many do it?
It's, um, it's gonna generate, um-
Three and a half megawatt?
Yeah, so it's three and a half megawatt. It will generate, um, I wanna say about six million kilowatt hours. That's pretty close.
So the school has a hundred thousand KW.
Right.
Which won't run the whole school. Okay, if this runs the main part of the school, it has an heating system and a water system. So what he's talking about is-
Sixty of those schools, right?
Six hundred.
Six hundred. Six hundred together on this.
There you go. I'm gonna say it's just a model.
Yeah, it's a huge amount.
For a school to check.
Yeah. My son's an mathematician, not me. But, um-
Yeah, a lot.
Six hundred schools, a lot.
Yeah. You know, and there's a lot of these going in, I mean, um, I don't know how many, I'd say probably forty this year of similar size, maybe fifty. And those are the smaller one megawatt to five megawatt size, they call it DG or distributed generation size, about forty or fifty of those. Um, but then there's the bigger ones, like Sanford or, um, the Chinboro one up in, um, is it? Well, there's a bunch of bigger ones and, you know-
What do you call this one?
This is a, they call it a DG, a distributed generation.
Okay, okay.
Cause it's on the distribution grid and it's under five megawatts. So they, these are DG projects.
So they do, yeah.
Versus utility scale.
Right.
So those are the two key, or residential. So you can break, break, uh, all, you know, a lot of this clean energy stuff into those three buckets.
Right, right, right.
So DG, um, these are all, cause it's on the distribution grid and then the, you know, utility scale ones, they bypass the distribution and they tap into the transmission, into the substation and stuff.
So you estimate the total cost of this project would be about?
Five million bucks.
Five million?
Yeah, about five million. So, you know, it's, it's the classic kind of risk reward, right? I mean, the company that I work for, it's like, I don't get any of that, right? The banks really do, cause they get the credits, they know how to monetize those credits, they put up all the capital upfront, cause it takes millions to, you know, to build it before you actually get power. So these programs try to spread a little bit of that out, you know? Um, Maine gets credit for clean energy, um, the landlord gets some, we hire people, the town will hopefully get some credits too, or the school. So they try to, they design, you know, they did a good job with this program, I think so, from doing this in other states, I think they did a good job overall.
So anybody else here on the void, I hope you've all looked through this and I hope you have looked through the actual application.
Good thing you brought that out, those kind of credits. Get back to, this project is considered an essential service.
Yeah.
And to the, um, town's land use table, it's a renewable energy on a non-existent structure.
Right.
So it's a conditional use review.
Exactly.
Um, and that's what we have before you. Um, and the application, uh, addresses all the standards, um, and the conditional use review, as well as the good neighbor standard.
Yep.
So, um-
That's exactly what I was, also gonna get out.
Absolutely, and I don't want to see you coming, I'll let you run.
Yep, um, but looking at the, uh, I think we can start moving forward a bit and what I would like to do, uh, is entertain a motion to, uh, accept the application tonight and then plan a site lock. So when we see you next time, we can get into the mitty gritty, we'll have the application behind us and we will get into the, um-
The status in order?
The status in order.
And, and what is this application for?
It's a conditional use application. So then the standards that you would review this application for is six point six, twenty-three point seven four, is the standards applicable to this one you're doing. So I have made you a list of what came in your packet. They have a list of how they answer those standards.
Right.
We also have a list from our consultant on how they answered the standards. So I think over the next couple of weeks, you should, you should just look at those side by side of it, see if you can come on back and then you're going to have installation, sort of the, the, the shape of the six point.
So what you're asking for, if, 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 on the site plan, if you're-
There is no site plan, there is no, I just would like, just to- There is no. I just would like, just to accept the application.
Okay.
Okay? So then we can go forward from there and set a date for the site lock. Move these things.
So is it, tonight the application is accepted and considered complete? I mean, how does, I mean, now, once it's complete, then you look to see if it meets all the, you know, standards in order?
Even us, everything we need in the application.
Yes.
Application is complete.
Yes.
And we, we can or cannot accept that, you know, how the vote goes.
Sure.
And then, when we see you again, we will go through the permit review, the 6 point.
Right.
Yeah.
Conditional use review standards, right?
Review standards. 6.6, 2.3.7. And assuming that you meet all those standards, then the board can, if they wish to, set a public hearing. Set a public hearing and, you know, if we feel it's necessary.
To see if I do this right.
Okay.
All right.
We'll let you know if you don't.
I'm sorry, you can go. I've made him mostly accept the conditional use permit application. For so tired of you. How's that? Did I get that?
Yes, you did.
Oh my God. I did that a couple of months.
Is there further discussion on the acceptance of the application? Take the votes then, all in favor? You got it all? Yeah, it is accepted. Now let's talk about a date.
It's going next Saturday at 12?
We, we can't hold it by that. No, we can't do it that quickly. Let's see, can we do it? Can we do this one?
I need it recently.
Okay, and that's making me forget it, I could run it in the morning. Well, I'm trying to.
What's the date now?
Today is, today's the 12th. Today's the 12th. We're going to Grammy Rose on the 14. Okay, at 1 o'clock, at 11 o'clock. Let's try to roll it in together. No. You're sitting over there on the east coast. Or the west coast, the east coast over here. What do you think about Grammy Rose? Is, is an hour gonna be?
I hope so.
Well, I know we all hope so. And then we're gonna see what these guys can do too.
It's hard to know how much we'll be able to seal it, but it's no problem.
Well, it's.
You know, we often don't spend enough time.
That's true, that's true. I wonder if you're available?
We can, but it's gonna be that they're a leak.
It's high, it's high.
It's high, because this is kind of, you're getting an hour. We're getting an hour this week, but I mean, it's very hard to do. Still not enough time, really. 6:30? 45? When we went out to the Young Church Road. But even that was right. What time?
5:30, 1:00.
Everybody write that down.
What is it?
A little more daily.
You know, Wednesdays aren't bad.
Oh, with the, the.
What, Wednesday day?
Well, not this day.
Well, no, I know.
I get it. The school budget.
And the school budget, yeah. If. Wait, let me, I just want to, is this open or closed? I can't tell.
What about, like a Monday or a quarter? Is that, I wonder if that was planned?
No, they're, okay, let me just see them. Do, Monday's better for you guys?
Monday's be quick.
Oh, if not, we'd get it, it'd be great. We like to roll them in together, let's see. What time would we think if we did it on a Monday? Y'all did. No, no, we have to give notifications. Sightlocks are public, so the public gets them to come along. We're talking the 16th.
I'd like to receive a workshop on it. Well, I could do it. And I could bring our product engineer so that you could assist me. That's fine, if you're okay.
I'm okay with that. I just, I had a workshop at the university.
Two days, 16.
Are you down for 16? No. Can you? I'm not topically close for you.
The date of all.
Yeah, we, I usually like, one through one and one through one.
Yeah.
Okay, so what are we set for?
Yeah.
I don't think we do it.
Yeah.
Are we going in on the ass of the road or are we?
Where there's some place in the hill where you can smoke your own wine.
Right, you know, you could, I'm ready to see this, but you can park. I mean, you, I know my Camry right back these years. Granted, it is this fall, not, not squishy spring. But I mean, it is a pretty solid road, and I used to have a Camry and I met Larry out there back, back fall. We were doing, well, the surveys, field surveys. So, but this road is really solid, so you could, you know.
I mean, there's a couple of south, you know, where we drive stuff.
Oh, my little Camry right out there.
Did you look Camry, did you hang it again?
Yeah.
I don't think they're always clean.
Oh no, I mean, it seems pretty gravelly and dry, so, yeah, I was out there this, I think October, remember?
The only thing I will tell you, and since this is on a Monday, if we cancel it, because it is May, and we know what can happen in May in the winter. You know, that 100-foot storm that she was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I grew up near, so we go to New York.
I know, yeah. And I grew up north in Minnesota, so I know all that. You know, we will make sure before you leave, we have a way to get in touch with you.
Okay.
You know, usually if it's still in the week, if I can certainly put you on Friday or whatever, whatever, but I wanna be able to get in touch with you.
Yeah, it's not that far for me, and I don't, you know, so I appreciate that, yeah.
You know, we don't want you to be driving down here with whoever.
Yeah.
In that, that way.
Okay.
So that would be, that would be good.
Okay, so 16. That's the one you did right?
Yeah.
Makes her, her accommodate that weekday schedule. So if the site walk was, you have 16, that's, well, is there a planning board meeting the following week?
Planning board meeting on the 19th.
Oh, on the 19th.
And that's what's scheduled, a public hearing.
We probably have one meeting before.
You go through your standards, really don't get the public hearing until it's been unified. So, you go through your standards.
Why is it?
Oh, not yours. Now, we've met through your standards for years and I haven't changed. But, sorry, you tied up on the 19th?
No, no, I'm just trying to, I'm just, you know, follow the box of all here, if you will.
This week is already, we've already come on the agenda, right?
No, we haven't.
Oh.
But I think we can. Once they get you to do the list down, we're done, until, until it's done.
I'm gonna tab it and print it out for you.
Yeah, on our cheat sheet.
That will do.
On the cheat sheet, yeah, but that's cheat sheet.
You can't make the 19?
No.
I can do that. You can do the site lock now?
We have standards to, I mean, I got it, so.
Yeah.
I can get someone else to come in instead, I mean, so.
Jim, are you doing the project, are you the hands-on person?
We're permitted, yes.
With permitting?
Yeah.
On, on lifting and stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you have to be up to date on the.
I, I look, look. Yeah, so, yeah, I have no concerns about.
Do we have?
And I, and I.
Some authorization, one city, I don't believe that. Okay, thank you.
No, I'm very familiar with the conditional use things in the town.
So, I mean, you know, if one of you can do it? Because otherwise people are gonna wait two weeks.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. No, Jim can handle it, honestly, I have full confidence. And I also have other colleagues who can come up and represent the company.
Right, okay.
Okay. I, I have a flight that's, that's, vacation.
Good luck with your flight.
No, I get that messed up, you know, so.
Just flying to Boston or something?
No, it's.
Staying out of the airport?
Trying to do something fun, going to Yellowstone, so I've never been to Yellowstone. So.
Well, this is very interesting. Thank you, Diana, very much. And let me see if I have a 19. So, that being done.
Let's see on the 16.
Yeah.
For the site lock.
Yeah.
Are there other, you mentioned other solar companies, are there other?
I don't know what company, I don't know anything, except I know there's one more coming in.
In Acton?
Yeah.
Okay. I can, there's a interconnection queue list, I can look and see if there's anything on it that would, I mean, useful.
Just because we have, I drive through this enough, so.
Do you wanna give this to the panel?
We have, we have.
Yeah, you have to take what's on, I have it.
Thank you for coming down.
Now I'm just trying to appreciate it.
Before you leave, this is, are you a local person?
I am, yeah, I live in Dayton.
But I mean, you know, what's that plan and all that?
Sure, yeah, I went to school in Bonny Eagle.
Oh, okay. No, I just, my mother was from Vermont, I was just curious. From Vermont.
From Vermont. No, my, my family came from Rhode Island, back in the.
Back in the day.
Back in the day.
Yeah, no.
So, so, some of the Mormons are coming.
In some place, in some places, yeah, and other places not so much.
Yeah.
Serious. Thank you.
See, I say you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'll drive home.
Thank you. I'm glad we heard this was gonna be a quick meeting.
The only other thing we have is the.
Great, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Please, of course.
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Is that the new? Is we do have a public hearing at 6 o'clock on the 12th. And a regular meeting after that. Sorry? Yeah, at 6 o'clock, and a regular meeting. And that's what we have on the agenda. The only thing I would like to, what we talked about is when they come in, we're gonna go over the standards. So, look at, you know, this, and ECD. And, and thank you for doing this. I mean, Brenda did a really good job of putting this on, I'm doing this. We know what our consultant said, we know their answers now to this, and, so we have a couple of weeks too. And I think it's ECD, actually, not like so much. That being said? Could I entertain a motion?
Let the motion go through.
Okay.